Going to call to order the July 20th meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Jean, could you take attendance?
Sure. Kelly Cormier?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Aton Goldberg?
I am here.
Alyssa Koenig?
Here.
And Peter Boynton. So Peter is unable to join us tonight.
Okay, so we have four. All right. Let's start with Senior Center Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community Economic Development, request to extend site plan review and common driveway special permits.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. I come before you with a request. You should have received a memo from me that outlines that request. It's in regards to a site plan review special permit, as well as another special permit that were both approved by this board back in September of 2019. Those decisions or those permits lapse if they haven't been substantially used within a two-year period of time. And alas, here we are almost two years later, and we have not begun in a substantial form the Senior Center project. And there are a couple of reasons for that. One, obviously, being COVID-19 played a role in a variety of ways. Namely, there was a tenant in one of the properties that Minco owns. And because of the emergency order to place an moratorium on any evictions, there wasn't really a legal way to have that individual leave the premises. And so that played out for quite a period of time. And then for another period of time, we have been sort of in negotiations, final negotiations with Minco, sort of wrapping up the legal aspects of closing on both, on the land transaction, basically. Both buying one of the properties and accepting the other property as donation. And so now we're finally at the point where we're on the verge of closing. We'll be doing that, fingers crossed, tomorrow. That is tentatively scheduled for tomorrow. And so once that happens, we'll be able to move forward. So really, this six-month extension request is just to make sure that we have the buffer we need to carry this project forward to get it moving in a substantial form. I don't expect that we'll really encroach far into that six-month period, if at all. In fact, I think we can get started, you know, very shortly after we close on the property. But I appreciate the board's consideration for the request. Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions?
I mean, the only question is, once it goes to start, you know, because we don't want to have to do it again. But it sounds like you're pretty confident that we won't have to do it again.
Six months is enough time?
Yeah, I believe so. So what's going to happen is, assuming we close tomorrow, we're going to pivot very quickly to have a discussion with our contractor, Castagna. And they have to discuss with us any escalation in materials costs. I'm sure everyone at home watching and in the boardroom is quite aware that there's been some inflationary pressures on the price of materials for building. So we are going to have to have that discussion. And we're confident we can absorb those cost increases. But once we have an understanding of what those are, we'll be able then to give a notice to proceed to Castagna. And so I think that we'll be moving forward sometime in the next couple of months here. So first, they have to abate and demolish the buildings that are on site. And then they have to wait for the steel framing to come in so that they can then move forward with pouring foundations and installing that steel later this year.
I'll just add that I questioned this as well. As you know, the board is allowed to extend up to one year for the special permit. We're only asking for a six-month extension because we're quite confident that within six months we'll be in the ground and substantial commencement of the permit will begin.
Is there any reason not to just do it for a year, just in case some wacky thing happens and we don't have to come back?
Worst case, if we came back, it would be for additional six months and still under your purview. So Andrew, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just say this. I'm happy to take a year extension, but I want to be very clear. I'm more than confident that six months will suffice. But I just, I thought it was important to put forward the narrative that we're not expecting this to drag past six months.
Okay. I mean, I'd rather just do it for a year, just to be safe. Why not?
It doesn't make a difference to me, one way or the other. I mean, if they're confident six months, then fine. I mean, I don't, I mean, my inclination is to agree with you, but.
Kelly, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd like to go for the year, just given we know things happen, right? So we can go for a year and just, there's no downside to doing that. Let's do it.
Alyssa? All right, so let's do it. So we have a notice of decision, extension decisions. So can we get a motion to approve the notice of decision extension with the extension being until, hold on, I'm doing math, September 17th, 2022? September 17th, 2022. Can we get a motion?
Okay, I'll make such a motion.
Motion made by John. Can we get a second, please?
A second.
Second by Alyssa. Well, roll call vote. We're a hybrid. Kelly?
Yep.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, extension granted until September 17th, 2022.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Can I just get the motion a second again? John, the motion, and Alyssa the second.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have continued public hearings. 325 Johnson Street, Kevin and Allison Sparks. They've asked to continue that public hearing until August 17th, 2021.
Yes.
And that's after, is that ZBA?
So both the ZBA and the Conservation Commission will meet again prior to that.
Okay. Can we get a motion to accept that continuance request?
A motion.
Okay. Motion made by Alyssa to continue 325 Johnson Street until August 17th. Can we get a second, please?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor. Kelly?
Yep.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. We will do 735 Turnpike Street. This is a new public hearing. I'm going to actually read this statement that I should have read at the beginning. This will apply to our meeting as well as this public hearing. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting, as well as this public hearing, will be conducted in person and via remote participation in accordance with applicable law. This meeting and this public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted both in person at the meeting location, which is at Talent Hall, as well as via remote participation. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or by going online at www.northandoverkm.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means if they choose to do so. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If members of the public would like to participate in this public hearing but not attend the meeting in person, you may email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to jenrighd@northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay. We are going to do 733 Turnpike Street. Ann B. Lee and Love Green LLC, application for a common parking areas and multiple-use facility special permit under Article 8, Supplementary Regulation, Section 195.8d 5 and 195.10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant seeks a special permit to allow for relief from parking space requirements due to the hours, days, or peak parking demands for the uses on-site, being so different that a lower total will provide adequately for all uses or activities served by the parking facility. Property is located in the general business zoning district. All right.
Okay. So the owner, Jasmine Plaza, would like to lease space to a juice-type operation, which has been determined to be a restaurant use by the Inspector of Buildings. This business will not have any seating. The total number of onsite parking spaces for this use, in addition to all other uses on-site, is not sufficient according to the zoning bylaw. The plaza currently has 73 delineated parking spaces. According to the zoning bylaw, including this proposed use, the mix of businesses would require 138 parking spaces. The intensity of the restaurant use is contributing to this issue. The restaurants in the plaza currently include Dunkin' Donuts, Captain Pizza, which is primarily takeout, although they do have six tables inside, very tight fitting with four seats per table. Sunju Restaurant. The parking requirement for restaurants is 15 per thousand square feet of gross floor area. These three restaurants, along with the proposed restaurant, require a total of 102 parking spaces. So the application includes information from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, Parking Generation Fourth Edition. And so when we get traffic reports, they're generated based on this type of engineering study. So for classification of A20 shopping center, according to this report, strip malls with less than 30,000 square feet building area are classified as typical anchor and tenant type with small businesses. Parking supply ratios for this type of shopping center suggest 4.1 spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. This property consists of 14,696 square feet of gross floor area. So the parking required, according to this study, would be approximately 62 spaces. The owner of the abutting property, who is also here today, did contact me and suggest that he would entertain a land sale to allow for construction of additional parking spaces. However, this lot is significantly handicapped with wetlands. I've included photos showing the approximate extent of these wetlands. And the photo shown here today, within the lot of Jasmine Plaza, you can see there's a stream there. And so in your packet, there's aerial views of wetlands that encumber both his site as well as Jasmine Plaza's site. And so it would be certainly advantageous to increase parking. They're somewhat handicapped by wetlands in this area. I will also add that I've visited the site four times over the last couple of days. The applicants are here for a common parking special permit because obviously Dunkin' Donuts peak hours are different than Sunju, which is a restaurant. There's Captain Pizza in the middle. This is a juice-type operation that will have no seats involved. I think the site benefits from parking on Willow Street, which, again, you can see from this photo, there's a couple of tractor-trailers here. I've noticed three to five cars parked on this as well. I'm not sure if they're employee parking, but there's also parking to the rear of this building that I suspect are employee parking as well. And so in my visits, because they've been around noon or later, I've witnessed up to 17 spaces unoccupied along Route 114, so the Dunkin' Donuts stretch of this. I think, as we know, people are hesitant to walk. And so they may opt to park on Willow Street and be closer to Sunju than to park at Dunkin' Donuts and have to make that walk. But there's always been available parking while I've visited. The Inspector of Buildings comments are in your packet. He's concerned about another restaurant use. But again, based on time of day and peak usage, the applicants are requesting a common parking facility to account for all 10 units within the building.
How many spaces are there now?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three now. Is this, so juice, I guess, I'd like to hear some more about what the actual proposal is for what kind of place, what that means by a juice restaurant. But also, is it replacing a current business, an empty space? What's it replacing? Because, I mean, obviously, if it's, if there's a business going away and traffic, it's parking there or using that, that's important to know.
So the change of use requires more than five additional spaces is what triggers
Right.
the zoning review. So this does trigger five or more spaces.
What's there now? What's being, and what's compared to be proposed?
I'm the owner of the plaza. Hi. I've owned it for 15 years. That particular space, for almost half the time, was a caterer. They made food there and sold food to go. And then after that, it was a cookie place or sweets. It's called Thotie's Delights. Made cookies and candies. Again, food to go, no tables. After that, it was a place that made spices. That was the most recent one. It's been empty for about a year now.
Okay.
I believe it's, this is a very, John can speak on this, but it's almost the exact same type of business that was in there before. And it's really, I don't think it's class, should be classified as a restaurant. I think it's more of a retail space. I mean, they are, I mean, they have been cooking food there all along, but no one's, no one's ever eaten in there.
So, well, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. So we're talking like a juice bar or something? What is it that we're talking about?
Hi, my name is Ann Lee. I'm like the owner of Love Green LLC.
Yeah.
So the model of my business is a juice bar that I do cold-pressed juice that already bottled up and put out like in the refrigerator. So it's more like a grab-and-go business. And my hours expected to be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And there's not going to be like any sitting there. So it's only to-go juices and like packed salad. There's not going to be, you know, some, like 16 people in there at the same time.
So it's not something where you go up and order something to be made? Like, say, I, can I go up and say, I want a mango smoothie, and you're going to make it for me right then? Or is it already made?
So right now, it's only, only already made because for cold-pressed juice, it can last up to seven days. And it's only for like retail, like we have like a refrigerator, and we have the juice out there.
Okay. Are there, Doug, are there reserved spots for any? As I remember, there's not reserved spots for any particular restaurant. So, yeah, well, I mean, it's tough. It can be, I mean, so Jean, I know you said you went there at noon. Usually, I go when I go there at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night. You know, pick up something for my Sunju or something like that. And it's tough to find parking in the back now.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Well, of course, it's been taken away with the outside dining.
Right.
I drove through there on the way here, and there were 28 cars. At about 6:15.
There is some parking in the front, in front of Dunkin' Donuts. And like people don't know, there's like four parking spot right there. So they all like park in the back or like on the side and like overlook that area.
They don't want to walk.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, there's always seems to be spaces like Jean said. I mean, some of them, I mean, people want to park at the front door.
Well, if you're getting juice, maybe you're healthy.
It's just a tough lot. Once you pass all those open spaces that, towards 114, you've passed them. And then you encounter, like you said, this, Sunju, when it's busy, the parking is full. At lunch, I think Captain Pizza does the primary business. But the point of this permit is different peaks, different days of the week, and.
Jean, what days of the week did you go do your inspection?
So I went this past Friday, and I went twice today. And I went at lunch and about 2:00 o'clock today.
What time does Sunju open? Like noon?
11:00.
11?
They're open for lunch and dinner. I think seven days a week.
Yes.
But you haven't, just to put it in context, you've never seen a situation where there's a parking problem, a safety problem or anything like that. You've never heard anything from police or fire or anybody about that. It may be not optimal because the shape of the lot is a little funny, but that's, you know, that's like, but I mean, I think that if we were up against a limit of parking, it would be a different struggle. We're not up against a limit of parking.
So I've never heard reports of a queuing onto 114, especially Dunkin' Donuts, obviously, in the morning. I've never heard a report of that. I've never received a call about complaints about parking. Like I said, I think probably the backside, there's often parking, but you'd have to walk around the entire building to get to it. So I trust those are employees parking back there. And Willow Street's, it's a public street. And so they can park on Willow Street to walk to Sunju. It's probably more appropriate to park there to get to Sunju than it is to park at Dunkin' Donuts to get to Sunju. So I trust that's what's happening.
I've had a similar issue with parking problems going all the way through. And once you miss any spots, you keep going through, and I'll park on Willow.
Yep.
Other than trying to get back to the empty spots at Dunkin'.
And I don't frequent the plaza, but that's what I found I would do, given the three visits that I just made. Once you pass them, optimistically hoping you're going to get one outside of Sunju or Captain Pizza, once you pass it, you've passed it. And it's easily evident that you have access to Willow Street.
Seeing the application originally, I was concerned just because it is sometimes hard to find parking there. But this particular use with an 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. kind of really does hit that different peak, you know, rather than something that's lunch and dinner and sit down. So my question is, if we give a special permit, does that stay with this particular business? Rather than, I hope your business is very successful, but not always the case, and go for, you know, a couple of years. Two years from now, I would want it limited to not, and not necessarily say, okay, now a donut shop goes in there or something else goes in there. I really think it should be limited to her business and these particular facts of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., approximately, this type of business. So I just would want to write it up that way, that it's somehow tied to that.
That was my concern as well, because it does run with the land.
Yeah.
So unless we condition it accordingly, it could expose you to other types of uses here. So I think there's opportunity to condition it either based on hours or the type of operation or no seating or something to that effect.
So that's what I, I mean, I'd like, let's really tailor it to this particular business and model. And then if changes you find you actually need to be 10 to 4, or 8 to 4, or whatever, you can come back or go for a minor modification or something like that. But if it was a total change of the business and now it's going to be a sit-down restaurant, then we'd have to come back to us for a modification. So that's my thought, is it seems appropriate, given the information you've given us. But we're going to really tailor it to this particular business just because we don't want to set ourselves up for something in the future that's not this. That make sense?
I agree.
Okay. All right. So what we're going to do from here is we'll continue this until the next meeting. We'll get a decision drafted for the next meeting, and then we'll vote on it at the next meeting. As of now, it's scheduled for August 17th. We may move that date. I know one member's not available, so, and we only have one meeting in August. So we're going to talk about whether or not we're going to move that up to the 10th or the 24th or do both. So sometime in August. As of now, it's August 17th.
I also want to add in is for my business, it's only from Wednesday to Sunday.
Okay.
And it's a vegan vegetarian business. So there's not going to be cooking time for like meat, which usually take longer.
Okay.
And it's only for like a breakfast thing, like avocado toast or like peanut butter and jellies, like toast. So it's not going to be like someone lingering around for like too long.
Okay.
If that's also a concern.
Okay, good to know. Well, we definitely wish you luck, and we'll, for now, we'll continue it until August 17th.
So Aton, I would just suggest, so the property owner of the land next door is here?
Yeah.
If anyone has any questions or if you want to speak at all? No?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, like you said, that there's, obviously, if there can be more parking for the whole plaza, that would be great. But I'll leave that between these private gentlemen to discuss and see how that works out.
I guess opportunity may be in this clear area shown in this picture. But like I said, there is a stream that runs on your property. So I think it's somewhat challenging, but if you guys want to entertain conversations, then you should do so.
Okay.
Yes. So the plan is, there's not going to be a notice of draft decision.
If we change the date, we'll let them know?
Yeah. Certainly, I'll let you know if the date changes. And Kaylee, you follow up with me a lot.
Yes.
So just certainly follow up with me to make sure that I keep you informed.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. And thank you, sir, for coming down. Okay, senior, okay. Inclusionary housing bylaw. We're moving right along. Okay. So now we're going to talk about draft inclusionary housing bylaws. So one of the, so a couple of things. So we've obviously been talking about housing and housing options and housing choice and affordable housing and different things for years and years in different contexts. As part of the master plan, we talked about housing. Obviously, one of the more contested or diverse opinions issue. But one of the things that came, kind of came up during the discussion at the moratorium, and it seems for both proponents of the moratorium and opponents of the moratorium, felt that affordable housing in town was a need. We know that we're below our 10% number in terms of 40B. That's something that we've also discussed in the context of Royal Crest. So what we, Jean is going to talk about today is a potential inclusionary zoning bylaw. I'm hopeful this is something that really everyone can get behind. It's not something that requires or creates more housing. It's basically if you're, if someone is going to develop a larger development, then they're required to put in a percentage of affordable housing. That's in its basic, the most basic terms. There's a lot more detail to it, a lot more to discuss, but that's kind of the idea behind it. So with that setup, Jean, why don't you kind of tell us where we're at and kind of what kind of feedback you're looking for and kind of what kind of process you think we should go through?
So I guess the feedback is just initial thoughts. This is really to just open the conversation up. I drafted a bylaw to present to you. Some may recall that in the fall of 2019, I also drafted a bylaw. But as everyone knows, I mean, we've been straight out since that point. However, a town meeting certainly came across loud and clear that we have a significant issue with affordable housing in town. And so the bylaw I've drafted is largely based off of model zoning that's presented by the state, as well as research throughout many communities. It's broad. It's just opening the discussion. It allows for developments of eight or more units to require affordable housing. The calculation is for 15% of those units. And so between eight and 11 units, it would only require one affordable housing unit. From 12 to 18, it would require two, and it builds from there, so over 19. Since 2010, I don't think we've had a subdivision larger than 10 units. So obviously, land is scarce. The 80s, 90s, early 2000s, we had large-scale subdivisions that just aren't the case today. As everyone's aware, the trend has been more towards multifamily housing. So smaller footprints, but higher buildings, denser units. So this would incorporate affordable housing in those units. So to date, all the housing units that have come forward in terms of Princeton, Avalon, Sutton Street redevelopment, also known as Minco, are all market rate complexes. And this would require an affordable component in those developments. It allows for onsite development. There's a provision that would allow for offsite development, as well as payment and lieu. And again, those are all open for discussion. I just kept it broad at this point so that the board could really see options. And then I would welcome any feedback in terms of that. Like I said, many communities were looked at. Most communities range from a 10% to 15% hurdle. And most require at eight and more. So I would say that is fairly consistent with what other communities require. The 10 to 15, I would say the vast majority also allow for onsite and payment and lieu. Some require for a land donation. I didn't include this in the draft just because I don't see the opportunity for a land donation. I mean, there's just not a ton of land that somebody would be able to donate to the town. The, if the board wants to pursue that, I'm perfectly open to that. The payment and lieu and the land donation, in my opinion, should go to the Affordable Housing Trust, which then could allow for supplementing affordable housing. It may not meet the requirement of the SHI listing, but it may be for first-time homeowners program or maybe for down payment program, things like that, that don't qualify to get us on the subsidized housing inventory list, but could subsidize affordable housing.
So does it completely, in all cases, keep the underlying zoning in place?
It does. So it allows wherever residential development is allowed, which is not only in residential zones, but it's also in many of our business zones, allow for 50% on the second floor. So anywhere that allows for housing, it requires to beat the affordable housing requirement.
Okay. But the point is, the underlying, if it's in a one-acre district, it's still one acre. Okay.
So it's town, it's townwide. And what people don't understand is, although it seems that only residential would apply, we have many business zones that allow for residential development, but not more than 50% of the footprint, so.
There are, at least in the draft, there are some kind of carrots. Like, so if you may be allowing for some flexibility on floor ratio, if you're adding more affordable housing, things like that. These are things we don't necessarily have to put in there, but there are some things that are put like a density bonus. These are things we don't necessarily have to put in there, but there are some things that are put like a density bonus, things like that. Like it doesn't change the underlying zoning of, you know, you can't, you're not going to be putting multifamily where you can't put multifamily.
No, no, but the dimensional requirements, you, you would, you can tinker with the dimensional requirements.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but it's up to the, it would be a, the planning board.
I'm sure there are varying models at different towns, but that is one of the options.
One thing I don't see in here, which I like, you know, there's no, some towns I know have like credits. So if you, um, build more than you need to in terms of affordable housing, you can get a credit on a future development.
So it's not a credit, but it allows the planning board to offer those same density bonuses to that person.
So I like that. But I know I've talked with other people that have had the, the credit provision that says, okay, if you built five more than you needed to here.
Yeah.
Then in a future development, you can do five less. I, I don't, it gets really confusing and the accounting is a pain. So I don't want something like that, but I've seen it in other places as an idea. Just, I mean, we can talk about it. I've seen it, but it becomes the accounting of who keeps track of that. Then if the property sold, does it stay with the land? Does it stay with the owner? Like if I build here and then I get credits, can I use that? If I sell it, like is it a fungible thing? It's kind of a mess. So I like the way it's kind of done here. So I think what maybe get kind of first impressions and then maybe we can talk about things that we're going to have to kind of dig into.
Yeah, so what I would recommend right off the bat is maybe having the Affordable Housing Trust, a couple of representatives from there come and speak to the board.
Yeah.
Possibly seeking somebody from Department of Housing and Community Development because this whole thing would have to be approved by them prior to going to town meeting. So if we can get an expert from D H C D, come speak to the board. And I would suggest maybe sending it to local developers that we've certainly had permitting in recent past, Princeton, Minco and Avalon Bay to kind of get their thoughts as to what this would mean. There's always a little bit of attention once, once you put this in. We don't want it to stymie development in that if it's too restrictive, you could have developers just not want to develop here.
If you tell you, let me give you an example. And I'll, it'll be an example which is not, it's likely to happen, but it's a traditional subdivision. And it's, let's say it's a ten lot subdivision, so one would be affordable. And let's just say for purposes of discussion, the, the houses are eight hundred thousand. And the affordable level is, I don't know, four hundred thousand. Does that mean if the developer doesn't want to have one of the things on that site is affordable, he has to write a check for four hundred thousand?
Yeah, so there's different calculations for that and we can get, certainly get into the detail of that. But Wellington Way is one we looked at. And so Wellington Way is off of Boxford Street. It was recently permitted, just street acceptance a year or two ago. And the delta on that would be about three hundred sixty thousand. So I think they went for roughly eight hundred thousand.
So, oh, okay, but that's, yeah, okay, but that would be whatever, and that permutation, the delta would be. I mean, if it were apartments, frankly, it's more like a forty B almost. I mean practically speaking.
Yep, and that is the case. So I would envision a developer would likely buy out that one unit. I just, that's just my gut saying that. And that buyout would be approximately three sixty, that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust.
The question, the question for the developer in that case is probably going to be, is it more beneficial to do seven without the affordable?
Well, I mean, obviously there's, you know, and you have to put something in so they can't carve it into two pieces and do all that sort of stuff. You know, I mean, uh, but yeah, at, at some point, there's going to be some legitimate gamesmanship that people can choose to do.
And so the language I use there is similar, uh, land disturbance permit has language that a posse is a posse and you can't play that game of developing it five years later. It's contiguous and that's in there.
Yeah, okay. How many towns in the state have inclusionary zoning? What's the?
So the number I can see when I research it is over a hundred, so just over a hundred.
And what is the, like, it would be useful to have a list. And what is the empirical information that says it actually helps make housing more affordable? I mean, if you say Newton has it, I'll go, oh, right. You know, I mean, why are we even having a conversation?
So I'm, that's an interesting question because I don't know how you measure that in compare. I mean, they're relatively new, right, in the last five or 10 years. And housing prices themselves have gone up, let's say in the last year, ten to fifteen to twenty percent.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, moving parts, but I.
I think it, but it definitely adds to your forty B calculation, right? Because by definition, you know, if you're building multiple, right? The only way you're going to make dense, if you're below your ten percent, the only way you're going to make dense in that is if you have larger developments and the percentage going in is over ten percent. Right, it's got to be twelve percent, thirteen percent, fourteen percent, or you're not making a difference.
Yeah, you're trying to.
But it's really a maintenance tool.
Right.
It's not going to get us to the ten percent.
But it can keep you from getting worse, yeah. So I think.
So John, the most recent towns we looked at, and these aren't the same I looked at two years ago. Two years ago, I looked at the difference that, but most recently, Andover, Westfield, Mansfield, Hoppington, Topsfield and Holliston. Like, they're very similar to us in makeup and population and demographics, I would say.
One of the things that I've been told that it's been helpful for is helping build your affordable housing trust because a lot of the developers would rather do a payment and lieu rather than onsite. At least, or partial payment and lieu. So it helps build the housing trust, which is a good thing because that has a lot of flexibility towards housing.
The, the housing trust kind of start was because of Edgewood. And we got a lot of money from Edgewood. But, but I mean, the, the thing about it is, and maybe I'm looking more at the overall situation of affordability because I think everybody says, oh, everybody wants affordability, but they don't want to look with any of the consequences of affordability. And the deep dark secret in this part of the country, unless you build with a lot of density, you're not going to have affordability. That's just a reality of the situation. And we're schizophrenic about that as a community.
True, I mean, there is a difference between true affordability, like non-capitalized A and affordable housing, you know, the definition of under the state guidelines.
Right, under the state guidelines.
Right.
Don't get me going on that, that drives me crazy.
But, but it's a big difference and which, which are we really talking about?
Well, well, I don't know, but I mean, I kind of think it's the small eye. It's like, how can you have sort of people with a regular income afford to live, uh, and have a choice of where they live?
So I think, yeah, I don't know how far this goes towards that. I think it's part of a tool. I think there are other tools that probably help, but I think it's going to have to, if you're actually looking at can people really afford to live here in like the reality factual, it's going to be multiple tools. So it's going to be one, having density, right, and having multifamily units. It's going to be having forty B, um, projects. It's going to be having something like the inclusionary zoning. It's going to be having an accessory dwelling unit that allows people to downsize and stay with family members and things like that. There's no one size fits all to the actual problem.
And the point is when the smoke clears, because of where we live in this part of the country, it's still not going to be affordable. You're never going to get that far.
It's, it's, it's going to be a incremental difference.
The, the only places where housing is affordable is where there's a huge amount of land or it's places where people don't want to live. I mean, that's, that's an unfortunate fact in life. I mean, that's, that's all, I just, my point a little bit is I don't oversell that this is going to solve all the problems in the world because it's not.
Like you said, I, I believe it's more of a maintenance tool. If we ever to get to the ten percent, this helps us because it's fifteen percent as opposed to ten. So it'll keep us just a little bit ahead of the bar. But, um, I just think we, we need to get to the ten percent in my personal opinion.
No, I mean, that's actually to me, one of the most compelling points of that, that where you're saying is it doesn't have us fall further behind. Because I don't think in and of itself, it's going to sort of, you know, single heavily solve the problem or even come close to solve the problem.
But it, and so I think one of the things going forward I'd like to hear is like try to parse through and see what, what if any are any downsides to it, right? So yeah, not overselling it, but what, are there any negative impact, right? So to Jean's point, we don't want to discourage development. So we don't want to make it too onerous, too strict. But at the same time, if most of the towns around us are doing it and it seems like a lot are, developers are just going to have to suck up the fact that wherever you go, it's going to be there, right?
Yeah. And that was one of my questions is what other towns, and I think Jean, I think we're listing out some of these have the same thing. Because then that means it's, we'll be at that same level for a developer to come in and do something as like surrounding towns. I think that's what will be key.
Right, so if we can maybe try to get kind of a more definitive list. I know when I worked in Beverly, that we were doing one, that was, you know, five, six, seven years ago. You know, but Andover, Topsfield, um, so a bunch of the local towns have recently.
Is there any way, an idea of, of when they put theirs in place and any effect that they, that it's had thus far?
Yeah, so we certainly surveyed in terms of payment and lieu. I was really concerned about that and what effect that has had. So we can put together some information on what they've shared on that.
Is that the D H C D could kind of give us some input on, on how, what kind of effects these have had that they've seen over the last couple of years? It, the last two years or last year has been, it's kind of difficult to measure to maybe take out COVID year. But what kind of effects they've seen once these have gone in? Has it limited development? Has it really blossomed in terms of affordable housing? Has it really not had much of an impact? Yeah, so it'd be nice to have someone from the state to come in and kind of talk to us about what they've seen.
Yeah, and to Jean's, but it seems like this is more kind of the, the maintenance item, right? This is, doesn't make us special, more difficult to work with. It's just, it's something that we, all of us need to be doing.
Right, to me, it seems like, you know, if, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't look like this calls for more multifamily. It doesn't limit more multifamily. It just basically says if you're going to be doing these developments, these are just some additional rules that you have to go through, just like you have to go through special permitting and things like that. I don't find it particularly onerous.
I would just say, had we had a pre-Princeton, Minco and Avalon, we'd have substantive units. Like they would have generated real affordable housing units. Subdivisions, like as John will attest to, I mean, they're just not the size they used to be in the eighties, nineties, early two thousands. But the multifamily housing could have made an impact. And a lot of people believe those housing units are forty Bs and they're not. So we have market rate, market rate, some by right and some by special permit, but those developers came here knowing that, so.
I mean, you saw the thing about the boroughs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Princeton Properties is what the boroughs, you gotta put like a hundred and sixty in there?
So let's, what do we?
And I think they're all likely.
Was any kind of initial thoughts on, kind of just in general, the bylaw in general and the purpose and things like that?
So I would just add the density component that we have is tied to floor area ratio.
Yeah.
And the vast majority of our residential districts don't have a requirement for floor area ratio. But R five, which is like a Royal Crest type, um, any of the Village Green, Heritage Green, Walker Road are all R five. That has a floor area ratio and so does an R six. The only R six development is Meadowview, um, Nadine and Buckley. So that's an R six development. Those have floor area ratio dimensional requirements. Where normal subdivisions wouldn't have one. So I just cautioned you that I'm not sure how many people would be able to take advantage of that density bonus.
That, Jean, it would be, this is for, I don't, I don't know if we have to kind of be more specific, but it'd be for new development, not, right, if you just reconstruct something or, I mean, I guess that's a question to, to answer, right? If you're remodeling or renovating or, you know.
Convert a two family to an eight family? You would, you would fall under this.
Okay. If you were already a multifamily or multi-unit, like a, a, a Heritage Green or something like, it's already multi-unit. And they're going to do a different type of multi-unit with that qualify.
If they're going to add one more monthly family, if they found space on their lot to add one more?
Yeah, that's it, right? So that's just right, you already have, let's say fifty, you add one more. It would only four, what if you even add seven more?
Yeah, I, I.
That's what, I mean, just things to think about as we're going through it.
They haven't done that in fifty, sixty years now, so I can't imagine.
Just trying to think of different scenarios that we might want to just.
Any new application that requires eight or more housing units, I think would trigger this.
Okay. That's interesting to think about. Okay, Kelly, any other, any kind of just initial thoughts about this type of bylaw or kind of the, what the direction that this is headed?
What we've already discussed, I think this is the right thing to do. What I would like is just to make sure that we're, we're being consistent with other, like appropriately consistent with other like towns. So we're not creating any additional barriers and aren't going to light on it either, that we're consistent.
Melissa, thoughts?
No, I think it's definitely something I'd like to see put, put in place. Of course, you know, years ago would have been optimal, but better late than never. Um, in trying to keep up with, with getting us in a position where we are keeping this in the forefront of our, of our housing problem here in North Andover and, and hopefully eventually coming to a solution over, albeit it'll be several years down the road. But we got to start somewhere and I think this is a really good start.
John, is there anything you, from your knowledge of the town and the, and zoning bylaws, like is there anything you see as kind of a problem or things? It seems, doesn't seem too objectionable to me. It seems pretty vanilla to me in terms of.
I mean, the things that people will be concerned about are the same things they were concerned about town meeting this past year. It's like, does this mean there's going to be more density? Does this mean there's going to be more sort of like the kind of housing we don't want? No, kind of thing? Is it, is it going to have some unintended consequences? I think that's in my mind what's likely to happen. I mean, anything, if there's at all perception that there's going to be more density, I think that's the thing that would trigger feedback. Which is ironic because it's contrary to, you know, if you're really believing in affordability, you need more density.
And my concern is, does it prohibit future growth in that people won't come, like developers won't want to do affordable housing and therefore they look the other way?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit, you know, again, this is probably where you probably should talk to a few people. But I mean, i- i- if you raise the cost of doing business at the margin, it's going to have an, an impact. It's, you know, I mean, for a lot of reasons, there's probably more housing development in New Hampshire than there is in Massachusetts now. And some of that's due, there's more land, but it's also the restrictions on building are less in New Hampshire than they were in Massachusetts like in Rome. So the cost of doing business is less.
But what we've, we've seen recently that there doesn't seem to be much hesitancy to build here in town, right? So even if we made it a little bit harder, that might not necessarily be too bad of a thing because it might get the right type of projects, you know? Maybe you have to think about it a little bit more, you can't kind of wing it as much, you know? You have to really plan for it. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. And like I said, if, if all the towns around us are doing it, then developers aren't going to really have a choice. I mean, I think, um, certainly doesn't encourage more multifamily. I don't, but I just don't think it limits it either. I just think it's just another set of rules.
All three of those developers, Avalon, Minco and Princeton, do affordable housing.
Right.
So they all have affordable housing projects in other communities. They just didn't choose to do it here. So I, whether they still would have come, I just believe they would have. It's just they're comfortable with it, they do these projects, so.
They change some of the dynamics of some of the.
Business deals.
Negotiations and some of the impact agreements and stuff like that, but that's okay. I mean, some, one of the, some of the stuff that we're looking for in some of these impact agreements is what's in here, right? Donations to Affordable Housing Trust, adding affordable housing, things like that. So I think it just kind of formalizes some of the things that we want anyway. Okay, so next steps. Let's get someone from the state in, for, that would be great. Let's, um, get the Affordable Housing Trusts and see what's going on with that now. Where does it stand? What are they looking at? What would help them? What they think of the bylaw? And then I would like to at least send it around to local developers if they want to come in and give us impact of, their thoughts, if they want, like what's, what they like, what they think could be problematic. Not necessarily that we're going to change anything, but it would be nice to know. Or they can underestimate that in writing or if they want to come in, that would be great. And then we'll just kind of, kind of keep moving this forward. Obviously, it'll take a town meeting vote to, um, get anything on that. I'd be curious if, if this is affected by the new housing choice law. I don't.
I don't think it is, but I can check with that.
Yeah.
And, um.
You'd feel like something like this should be, like it's within the spirit of, you know, trying to increase affordable housing and housing, but I don't, it doesn't necessarily squarely fit in it. But I'd just be curious just to have an answer to that.
Yeah. And I believe in the end, it would need to go to D H C D. Yep. And I believe in the end, it would need to go to DHCD prior to going to town meeting for their review.
Okay. Great. So great start. Thank you, Jean. And we'll pick this up next time. Okay. I'll go back to my agenda. Could we get a motion to approve the July 6, 2021, meeting minutes?
So vote.
Motion made by John. Do we get a second?
Second.
Second by Alyssa. Let's vote. Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Okay. So Kelly, you're not available on August 17?
I'm not.
Okay. Jean, do you think we should, so that, that would put again, put us at four. I know Royal Crest is supposed to come and kind of make a presentation. I really would like everyone available for that. We don't have a meeting the first week of August.
We don't. August 3, I think, is National Night Out.
Yeah.
And we also don't have a meeting on the first Tuesday in September.
So.
September 7 is Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah. Should we try to do a meeting either on the 10th or the 24th, or both? I mean, depending on what schedules are and what, how busy, I mean, if we're anticipating a lot of stuff from Royal Crest, I'd like to do that sooner rather than later. Do you think they'd be ready for August 10?
I'd be surprised, but I can ask. They promised a lot. So.
Kelly?
I'm available on the 10th. I have the same problem on the 24th. I would not be available.
Okay. Um, do you want to leave things, are, are people generally available the 10th or the 24th? Just in general?
Yeah.
Just in general. Okay. Why don't we leave it for now? And then let's discuss with Royal Crest what their potential availabilities would be, and then we'll decide if we need to move anything. And check with Peter too, as well, about his availability.
Okay. And when we're scheduling meetings, everybody can reply to all. I'll just let everybody know what's going on, and you can reply to all with availability.
Okay. Anybody have anything else that they'd like to discuss tonight?
No, that's all good.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made. And second hand, all in favor. Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, everybody.